Good evening. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to order the Village of Deerfield Board of Trustees meeting, August 4th, 2025. Roll call, please, Jerry.
Mayor Shapiro.
Here.
Trustee Benton.
Here.
Trustee Berg.
Here.
Trustee Goldstone.
Here.
Trustee Greenberg.
Here.
Trustee Jacoby.
Here.
And Trustee Appenheim.
Here.
We have a quorum.
If we could all please rise, and I would ask Josh Farron, know your face, please lead us in the pledge, and then we'll talk a little bit about why you're here. You can leave from there, it's fine.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic, for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, I'm going to read a proclamation, and before I do, I've had the pleasure of introducing or being part of the opening ceremonies for Junior Assembly of the Model UN for a couple of years, and it is such a cool thing to see what you guys do, to organize the middle schoolers to get involved at that age, and the programming that you do for their benefit. It's just outstanding. You'll talk about it in just a minute, but let me read the proclamation, then I'll ask you to step forward, okay? Whereas the Village of Deerfield is committed to recognizing and celebrating organizations that make significant and positive impacts on the well-being and the vibrancy of our community, and whereas the Junior Assembly of the Model UN Nations has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to serving the residents of the Village of Deerfield by fostering youth leadership, by organizing impactful community events such as the Model UN conferences for local students, and by providing essential education materials that empower students to develop crucial skills in speaking, debating, researching, writing, and critical thinking. And whereas the Junior Assembly of the Model UN's efforts have strengthened community bonds and have helped students engage with their communities, encouraging them to consider their place within their community, whether that be their school, city, or state, and whereas the dedication and the hard work of the Junior Assembly of the Model UN members, volunteers, and leadership embody the spirit of civic engagement and community service that makes Deerfield a truly special place to live and work. Now, therefore, I, Daniel C. Shapiro, Mayor of Deerfield, Illinois, on behalf of the Village Board of Trustees and the grateful residents of the Village of Deerfield, do hereby commend the Junior Assembly of the Model United Nations for its outstanding service and invaluable contributions to our community. We extend our deepest gratitude for their tireless efforts, encourage all residents to acknowledge and support their commendable work. Proclaim this Fourth Day of August, 2025, as their motion to approve the proclamation. So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I. I'm going to come down and present this to you, Josh.
Yeah.
Missing this way or that way?
How about this way?
Thank you very much to all of you, and to especially Mayor Shapiro, for approving this and for helping the Junior Assembly of the Model United Nations so much over this last year. I remember the first time I came to Mayor Shapiro, and I asked him, I came to him with this idea, and I asked for his help and his trust in making it happen, and he helped us every step of the way, and that is really what makes Deerfield such a unique and incredible place for us and for its students. I have talked to the mayors of dozens of towns, I've talked to the teachers of dozens of schools, over 100 now, and in not one single school, in not one single town, did I receive as much support and enthusiasm as I did from Mayor Shapiro, from Deerfield, and from Deerfield Schools. I am incredibly grateful to all of you, and thank you again very much for this.
You've given me way too much credit. Way too much. The credit goes to you and your leadership and those who led the conferences the last two years. Remarkable. The last one, which was a couple of months ago?
April.
April?
Yeah.
Feels like just a couple of months ago. This room was filled with young people in middle school, not on a Saturday morning, all buttoned up with ties or dresses or whatever, informal wear, sitting straight, very poised, highly intelligent, and they were ready to go. And it was so impressive of that group that you got in this room, and they really were, the way they were because of your leadership. So thank you for doing that. You're off to great things you're going to do.
Yes.
Yeah, and congratulations, and again, thank you.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Next thing I'd like to do is I'd like to make an appointment with this board's consent of Robert Feiger to the Cemetery Commission. There are a motion?
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
He is so appointed. Minutes of our previous meeting, July 22, 2025, I'm sorry, July 21, 2025, is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Move approval.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion's approved. Those in pay roll. Do you have a motion?
Move approval.
Second. Roll call.
He Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone?
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg?
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby?
Yes.
And Trustee Appenheim?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Now's the time during our meeting where we give the public an opportunity to make a comment on a matter that's not on the agenda. I see, Andrew, that you've made, you've signed up for two things. 155 Finkston is on the agenda, so you'll speak when we hear that, but you also are here to talk about Deerbrook. So if you want to talk about that, and then when we talk about 155, you can come in.
Right, right. 155 is going to be separate. One interesting thing I just came across is the difference in development. Andrew Mark, out of Ecorumandel here in Deerfield. Chicago has now fallen, it will soon fall to the second largest city in the Great Lakes region, and it's interesting the difference between the type of transit-oriented development in that city and here in Chicago. This is only a little over 400 miles from here. They're putting up an 82-story building, apartment building.
Which city are you talking about?
Toronto.
Toronto, I'm sorry, okay.
An 82-story building in Mississauga, near a ghost station. So the type of development around Lake Cook, I don't think is really, that's going into an extreme, but having a Home Depot and a lot of empty parking lots is also the other extreme. Also, Toronto will have more skyscrapers than Chicago. They're building like crazy there now. Deerbrook continues to be mostly empty at the south end. Every time we go past the dump, there's maybe five to 10 cars at the most. I don't know how much business they're doing, or sales tax they're bringing in. Sky Zone, I don't know if I've ever seen any activity there. I guess they have parties and things like that, but I don't know what that brings into Deerfield. And then everything in back has been torn down about five years ago and is empty. And again, I think that a mistake, and I said this 10 years ago or even more, was that Jewel should have moved into the dump. I do most of my shopping at Woodman's, which is 230,000 square feet, which is 100,000 square feet more than the great indoors, the dump. So I think that would have been very feasible for Jewel to use that space. Again, Woodman's manages to use 100,000 more square feet. And that being on the corner, I don't know why Jewel insists on being on the corner. There's a safe one near where I live in Phoenix, at 7th, just east of Glendale, or Glendale just east of 7th, and they put in solar panels for almost the entire parking lot. And that store is very popular, especially on days like today, when it was at 112 degrees for the third day in a row. So I think Deerbrook, for things like this childcare center, a lot of other things, there's a lot of things that can be done with Deerbrook in the long term. I think that site is so grossly underutilized, being next to the metro station, potentially a station that would connect to Milwaukee when the Hiawatha service is improved. Hopefully, at some point, that will happen. And so I think, again, that's something that in the long run, the Deerfields should look at really what can be done. Oh, one final thing is that, as far as the schools are concerned, I don't care, because it's not in the same school districts. So that's Northbrook's problem.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments.
And so if there's more students coming in from whatever type of residential.
We share your concern about Deerbrook.
Yeah.
The south end, and we are actively trying to, not pursue, listen to developers who are interested in that, but I share your concern. One thing I do want to correct you about is, behind Deerbrook, where there used to be joy of the game.
Right.
There is a development, 200-some-odd residential development.
I saw the proposals, and it was several years ago.
It's going vertical.
Oh, it's going, oh, they're actually building it now, okay.
So take a look next time you're near there.
Oh, I will take a look at that, okay.
Continental developers, it's out of the ground.
Oh, okay, it's actually out of the ground. I looked at it, and I'm looking at it far back. I will go take a look at that. Also, the Bally's was torn down over 10 years ago, and that site has never been utilized to.
And Sky Zone hasn't opened yet.
Oh, it's not open yet? That's why I'm nervous. Okay, that's a good reason.
You're going to get a VIP ticket to go to Sky Zone and do those trampolines, if you want.
Okay. So no wonder I haven't seen anybody park in front of it.
There's a reason.
It's a good reason.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Let's move on to our reports. Item 2564, consideration and action on the Plan Commission's recommendation on the request for an amendment to the comp plan, a rezoning of 155 Finkston from I-1 to R-5, approval of a preliminary development plan for residential plan development, with necessary exceptions to allow for a residential development, and a daycare center and nursery school, approval of a special use for Primrose Child Daycare Center and Nursery School, and the approval of a re-subdivision of two lots of the property located at 155 Finkston Road. Applicant would be 155 Group LLC and Primrose. Before we do anything with this, earlier this spring, I was asked by another attorney to help him on a project on a limited basis because he had some personal issues. Part of that was representing Primrose. I represented Primrose on a very limited basis for just a couple of months, no longer represent them, haven't represented them in several months. I don't believe, well, I know there's not a conflict of interest. My engagement ceased and terminated with them many months ago in an unrelated matter in a different community. Ben, do you want to jump in on this?
Yeah, so we took a look at it. There is no technical conflict of interest. So under our code and under state law, there is no requirement of recusal.
So I just want to make that disclosure. So, having said that, Ken?
And buckle in, I've got a lot to read, so I apologize. The Plan Commission held a public hearing on July 10, 2025, to consider requests from Baum Revision LLC proposing a preliminary development plan for a 7.43-acre property located at 155 Finkston Road that includes dividing the property into two lots, one for converting the existing three-story L-shaped office building into 112 loft-style rental apartments, and the other lot for constructing a new 13,600-square-foot daycare center and nursery school with over 12,000 square feet dedicated to outdoor play areas. The residential development includes a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom units with garages and surface parking. Eleven of the units are designated as affordable per the village ordinance. The daycare center and nursery school will be operated by Primrose Schools and serve up to 195 children with a staff of approximately 30. The petitioners are requesting an amendment to the village's comprehensive plan to change the zoning from office to residential, approval of a residential planned unit development, and special use for the daycare center and nursery school, as well as zoning relief related to land area requirements, perimeter setbacks, building height, parking dimensions, drive aisle widths, and signage. The text amendment is also proposed to allow signage for a daycare center and a nursery school in the R-5 district, along with the approval of wall signs above the roof deck. The petitioner plans to submit a plan of subdivision with their final development plan, which would be considered by the village board at a later date. The Plan Commission voted six to zero to recommend approval of the petitioner's request, with the condition that the village board further consider results of the Gaywalt-Hamilton Associates Traffic Speed Study and Traffic Signal Warrant Study. Should the village board approve the report, the matter will be referred back to the Plan Commission for consideration of a final development plan before coming back to the village board. We have representatives of both the Plan Commission and the petitioner here tonight, and Gaywalt-Hamilton as well.
So let's start with the petitioner. There you are. Please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Board of Trustees. My name is Andrew Scott with the Law Offices of Dykemah-Gossit. I'm here on behalf of 155 Group LLC, which is the owner of the subject property that Mr. Street just referenced. I could just bring up our, we've got a presentation to just walk through the details.
Absolutely.
Getting closer. You think after all these times, I would like... Do you want to, do we need to get sworn in? Do you want to do that? We've got a full member of the team, or would that, how would you proceed?
Why don't you run through it?
Okay.
I mean, it's in our packet, but we'd like to.
Okay, sure.
We'd like to hear about it.
Okay, sure, absolutely. So with me this evening are Paul Fishbein and David Baum, there with the developer, 155 Group LLC. We also have Patrick Ford with Primrose Schools, Scott DiGilio, RTM Engineering, they're the project engineer for this, Howard Hirsch with Hirsch MBG, project architects, Elliot Haffernan-Buck with Daniel Weinbach and Associates, they are the landscape architects, and finally, Luwe Abuna, KLOA, is our traffic consultant. So you actually, you see the site before you. Mr. Street went through some of the details. It is a 7.43-acre parcel. On it, you can see it's an L-shaped office building. It's about 120,000 square feet. It's three stories, 450 parking spaces, surface parking spaces. You can see, not very much landscaping around it. The building itself was built in 1987. It has really gotten to the end of its useful life, or sort of tailing off, and so it's really, really ripe for a redevelopment opportunity. As folks probably know, the office market demand isn't very strong, particularly for a building of this nature, somewhere between a Class C and a B. As I had mentioned, it's really ripe for an opportunity for redevelopment. Right now, it's about 90% vacant. There are a couple of tenants that still do have some term left, and upon the redevelopment, if we are unable to relocate them by the time we commence construction, they will be consolidated on the first floor of the property, and they'll serve out their terms. So there may be a small amount of office tenant there if the board were to approve the proposal. Just as a matter of background, zoning of the property is I-1 Office Research Restricted Industrial District, and there's a planned unit development that overlays it that was approved back in 1986. Just in terms of land uses in the surrounding area, you've got the Brickyards Public Park to the northwest. It's about a 13-acre, really, really nice park. To the northwest and west are single-family homes, some townhomes also a little bit further to the northwest. That's Bristol Place and Bristol Estate Subdivision. To the south and east, you've got one- and two-story office building, and then immediately to the east, you also have self-storage. And we'll talk about this a little bit later, but right now, the village's comp plan does designate the property for office uses, so that's the reason that we're seeking the amendment to the comp plan to get residential. In terms of next steps, I'd like to first have Patrick Ford come up, and he's going to tell you a little about Primrose Schools, a little bit of background of the company, why this location, and some of the other operational attributes of the proposed facility. And then next, Howard Hirsch will come up. He'll talk sort of on a global level about all of the architecture, the site planning, and so forth and so on for the property. And then we'll turn it over to Elliot, tell you more about the landscaping, tree preservation efforts that are going on on the property, and then I'll kind of sum up with some additional details and more information. So if that sequence is okay with everybody, I'll turn it over to Patrick Ford with Primrose Schools.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mayor, trustees, my name is Patrick Ford. Hopefully, I can be as eloquent as the young man here was earlier. My name is Patrick. I'm a real estate director with Primrose Schools. I've got some few basic comments for you tonight about our project. On behalf of Primrose School, we share our vision on the high-quality, education-based, early childhood learning center in Deerfield. Primrose School is a nationally recognized early education and care provider, proudly headquartered in Atlanta, Georgia. For over 43 years, we've been committed to nurturing young minds and supporting working families, with more than over 400 or 500 schools nationally in 34 different states. We've built a reputation for excellence in safety and community partnerships. Our approach is just not daycare, but it's education. We serve children from six weeks to 12 years of age, with a proprietary research-informed curriculum tailored to each developmental stage. Our goal is to foster long-life learning while supporting social, emotional, and cognitive growth of every child in our care. We're proposing a new Primrose School here in Deerfield, designed to serve up to 195 children, with dedicated staff of approximately 30 professionals. The facility will include 13,600 square-foot building with an additional 13,000 play area. Our hours of operation generally from 6:30 a.m. to 6:30 p.m., Monday through Friday, and we're designed to support working families while maintaining a peaceful presence in the neighborhood. Unlike traditional grade schools, our drop-off and pickup times are staggered, reducing traffic congestion. We emphasize safety. When parents pick up and drop off their children, they are required to walk in and sign in their children, ensuring safety and minimizing disruption to surrounding areas. With 51 onsite parking spaces, we've planned for smooth, efficient traffic flow. We have provided a handout that details timing and quality of drop-offs and pickups to support the quality of low-impact of traffic. So we did some internal research of our Chicago-based, all of the aggregate Chicago-based pickup rush hour timing, so we'll give that to you and have that discussion as well, okay? In the greater Chicago area, we currently operate nine schools, with five more in development. Deerfield stood out for several reasons. A strong population of young families, a high value placed on education, and a community that clearly prioritizes quality of life. Our demographic research shows that Deerfield has nearly doubled the number of children that we typically look for. This tells us that there's both a need and a desire for the kind of high-quality, early education Primrose shows and we provide. We recognize that Deerfield already has other childcare providers, and we respect the work that they do. Our goal is not to replace, but to complement, to offer another trusted option for our families seeking nurturing and academically-focused environment for their children. Lastly, Primrose has a 97.9% success rate over the past eight years, placing us in the top tier of all franchise systems. We develop over 40 schools each year, and our growth is driven by our ability to deliver a high level of service to the community. This service is a testament to our model, our people, and our commitment to our long-term success. I wanted to talk just a little bit about our franchisees. Our franchisees are, it's a really long, arduous process to even qualify as a franchisee. It's usually six months to a year for this process. We not only vet them financially, we also vet them with their community involvement, and their leadership, and their ability to influence, right? So it's a multi-tiered event and process. We take it so serious that we want their community to have community involvement, that in their franchise agreement, if they do not live at least 45 minutes away, or within 45 minutes of their school, we require them to leave and relocate to a radius within 45 minutes, at least six months before their school opens. So we take that community involvement and the community presence very, very seriously. Okay? We believe that Primrose and Deerfield will be accretive to the community, not just a business, but a partner in education, family support, and neighborhood enrichment. We look forward to becoming an integral part of the Deerfield family. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Start from the beginning here. Okay, thank you. My name is Howard Hirsch. I'm a principal at Hirsch MBG Architecture and Planning. We're the architects and planners for the project. I'd like to start with the, go back to the first photo, which is the current existing conditions. An aerial view from above, and what you see is an L-shaped building with some perimeter landscaping around the side of it, and then a big sea of parking. The next one is a rendered view of what this will look like when it's completed, and without getting into details, it's just very clear that what we're doing is really enhancing the site, minimizing the parking or the asphalt that's on the site, creating complementary uses and lots of green space to go along with it. So let me get into a little bit of the details, starting with the site plan. Again, looking at it, the site's broken up into two parts, one site for the residential development, one part for Primrose. Primrose will be located at the very southwest corner of the site, immediately adjacent to the existing entrance and exit off of Finkston. The two access points to the site, one on Finkston, and the one to the east is, are existing and will remain and have not changed, and what has changed is sort of the internal circulation within the site. So the Primrose being located at that corner gives us a very nice entrance presence to the development, along with their playground area and green space, and the amount of green space that we've added really enhances the site. In addition, the sea of parking has been replaced with more linear lanes of parking that go around the building, allowing us to drastically increase the amount of green space, including a large amenity area to the north that will have functional uses as well as green space for the residents. And then parking is a combination of onsite open-air parking and some parking garages in order to provide some covered parking, which is very necessary in this market. Those have been purposely grouped together to the east and to the north side to have minimal impact visually to the development, as well as to buffer the development a little bit from some of the uses to the east, such as the self-storage. Get into the building itself. Again, it's an L-shaped building. It'll have 112 units when it's completed on three floors. There will be seven one-bedroom units. There will be 104 two-bedroom units, and one three-bedroom unit within the development. They range in size from 629 square feet on the small end to about 1,200 square feet on the larger end. The average unit size is approximately between 850 and 900 square foot across the whole building. The rents are expected to range between 2,000 and 3,500, with most priced about $2,600 a month, and the market within Deerfield is in that 2,200 to 4,000 per month range, so it falls slightly on the lower side of the current market that's there. Again, there'll be a total of 11 affordable units. There will be a total of 255 total parking spaces between the ones in the garages, just for the residential development, and the ones on the site, with 222 that would be required by code, so we exceed the code requirement. The amenity area, and let me see if I can get you to that, okay. So this, I'll go through a little bit. This is showing the grouping of the parking garages on the east that are between the building and the self-storage to the east, and again, allows for a clear traffic flow throughout the site, but has enclosed parking, so you're not seeing the cars. I'll talk a little bit more about the design of those buildings as we get to it. This is the area I was just talking about to the north. This large green space directly north of the building has an amenity patio area that will have a dog run, it will have seating areas, it will have barbecue, it'll have a gazebo, have all sorts of options to sort of enhance the landscape that's there. Additionally, there's some significant large trees in that area that will remain and that will be enhanced, but Elliot, we'll talk a little more about that when we get to the landscape plan. These are some renderings of what that building will look like. The other thing that's really important to know about the site is that it's got a pretty significant slope on it, and you don't think of that in suburban sites. The point of the driveway by the entrance to our building, which is in the south sort of inner corner, to the entranceway is over 10 feet change in height, plus the building is up another three feet or four feet above that. So the first floor is sitting almost 14 feet above the entrance point on Finkston. So part of our design was to create a very nice, handicapped, accessible... So part of our design was to create a very nice, handicapped, accessible access point with planters, ramps, and stairs that will enhance the entrance to the building. The, the majority of the building on the exterior will remain exactly as it currently is. It's actually rare to find an office building that you could convert so easily into apartments. With the only difference, it will be modifying some of the windows to allow for operable windows for ventilation. The other pictures show some of the landscaping around the site that's being enhanced, and the one on the bottom right is sort of an image of the outdoor area looking to the northeast. These are some other aerial views that show how the parking is meant to be low and sort of part of the landscape with materials that will complement the building. We didn't want anything that stood out and took away from the building itself, which is the center focal point for the site. These are some renderings showing those garages, a brick base with vertical rib-type siding. The garage doors do not face any of the streets, do not face any of the neighbors to the west or north, they're inward-facing either to each other or to the residential, our residential building. Again, these are some of the drawings that are just in the package. I don't need to spend a lot of time on it, the existing elevations of the building. The other thing I just wanted to touch on was height, because I know we are asking for a variation on the height. The, the variation is partly by how the height is determined. The majority of this building is in the neighborhood of thirty-five feet, thirty-six feet in height around the perimeter. Just at the entranceway, there's an atrium with a skylight, and that skylight is what gets us up to the height of, I don't remember the exact height, forty-seven feet six, sorry, with the rest of the building at about thirty-eight feet eight. So we wouldn't be seeking quite the variation if we just looked at it from what is the height of the building at the closest points to the perimeter. Now, I'll take a few minutes talking about the Primrose building. You can see it's located in the southwest corner. The building is located on the western portion of that site, and it will have, the entrance to that building is on the far west portion of the site. The way the building functions is you enter, the children are checked in, they go to their classrooms, and then they traverse through the building to get to the outdoor play areas, which are secure. So the large play area of about twelve-thousand square feet is located directly east, and it also makes a nice void or empty space surrounding the building itself from a standpoint of the massings of the building. There's an additional play area directly to the north, which are for some of the older children, and then the, you know, perimeter, that's for the younger children, I got that backwards, my, my apologies, and the, you know, the burming and perimeter landscaping will be, remain and being enhanced as it exists. You can see the parking spaces that are located directly in front of it. The ones on the left will be designated for pickup and drop-off, so parents will bring their children in, get out of the car, take them in, check them in, and then leave. The remainder of the parking on their site, which surrounds their site, is for additional parents and for staff. These are some renderings of it. The building is a very attractive building. It has a main entrance with a cupola-type roof configuration, a double gable. It has stone base, it has, again, the same sort of vertical siding, ribbed-type wood siding that we were having on the garages, so that they play off each other in terms of their design. The lighter color, the white, actually is very nice in terms of how it sits within the landscape that is there. These are some elevations that, that show it, that show the, you know, main entry element with the cupola at the prime corner, which is really our entrance to the building, and it's relatively low-slung other than that as it surrounds the building. These are some, a photograph of another facility and also some drawings showing their signage. Their signage is very, very subtle. It is a circle that occurs in the center of the gable, and that, that's it, on, on two sides facing west and facing south. These are some of the materials of all the buildings, sort of all put together. We looked at the palette. You have the stone and the white siding for the daycare, you have the gray siding and the brick for the garages, and then you have the brick and stone detailing of the existing building, which also brings back in then the lighter color from Primrose. This is a section showing the site, just to really see how clear it is that the, the site slope is an important part of the planning of the development and where Primrose is located and how that building sits, and the minimal impact that it really has on the residents of the building itself. Another thing that, there's a lot of conversation about and that we made some changes to since the plan commission meeting, is the bike crossing area and the circulation plan. This plan, a little hard to read, but it, it shows the circulation within the site and how it is tied into the sidewalks and bike paths and streets that are part of Deerfield, connecting across the, the light at Deer Love all the way to the metro station, crossing across Finkston to, to the, to the park on the northwest, and, and tying into the existing sidewalks that are currently there. This is the change that we made. We previously had the entrance located at the south point of the intersection. We were asked to move it to the north after the traffic study by Gualt-Hamilton. We were happy to do that. It actually probably helped a little bit in terms of some of the grading, because the street is actually going up at that point, so we were able to eliminate the need for this sort of big horseshoe circular ramp and do a more traditional ramp, which we think actually will add to the safety, and, and it now has an island in the middle that allows a place of refuge for people who are either walking, jogging, or biking across the street. Again, a little bit of detail of how we connect to the existing sidewalks. This is on Deer Lake Road. I think I said Deer Love Road before. I'm having a little dyslexia today. Deer Lake Road, and these are some renderings of it. We did not update the rendering on the bottom right, so that's showing the previous configuration of the connection, but it, it sort of shows it's a high-visibility connection with, high-visibility striping, with flashing lights, and with, you know, all the distances and visibility have been vetted and, and checked. And then in signage, we are only asking to basically keep the existing two ground signs that are there. We're not asking for any more ground signage. The only change we're making is we're going to add the logo for Primrose to the bottom underneath the one-fifty-five Finkston sign on both the signs on Deer Lake and on Finkston, but they stay the small brick monument sign that's currently there. At this point, I think we're going to turn it over to landscape, so I'm going to ask Elliot to come up.
Hi there. I'm Elliot Heffernan-Buck with Daniel Maybach and Partners. We're landscape architects for this project, and I'll go ahead and walk you through our plans. So this here is the tree mitigation sheet that we have. There's a number of existing trees on the site that we're trying to preserve, similar to, similarly to doing a reuse of the building, we're trying to do a reuse of the landscaping as well. So you'll see this tree mitigation sheet shows the breakdown of the calculations that we did per code, showing the, the species group, the rate, the mitigation inches, condition, and so forth. So at the bottom of the sheet, you see that there's a total mitigation, the total mitigation required is seventy-five and a half inches, which equates to about twenty-six trees at three-inch caliber. And so we have, let me pull this up here, actually. We have a surplus of about thirteen trees, and you'll see below this calculation that there's also the parking lot tree requirement, and we are five shy of there, five shy of that calculation, just because of the lack of, of space for those trees. But considering that we have the thirteen surplus in trees, we feel that we've kind of met that requirement and maybe a little bit more than that, hopefully. This next sheet here, this is the proposal landscape plan. You'll see the majority of the landscape is addressing the north amenity area, the north and south entrances to the building, as well as the east and west entrances from the, for the vehicular entrances. The perimeter of the site has a shrub hedge, as well as some additional trees, and then the interior parking lot trees are also in all of the islands accordingly, as well as some shrubs. And then here for the north amenity deck, amenity deck, the north amenity area, we have opportunity for outdoor seating. We have a pergola with barbecue grills, fenced-in dog area, a bocce ball court. You'll see the three, or the four large honey locust trees that we're proposing to save in addition to the proposed shade trees, ornamental trees, shrubs, perennials, ornamental grasses, and ground cover. Here for the south entrance is the, the terrace entrance with the landscaping that we wanted to help kind of define the space. We have, again, a series of ornamental trees, shrubs, ground cover, ornamental grasses, and we also have in the south loading dock, some armor body to help screen the loading dock area. And then for our final two sheets for landscape, we have our plant palette, and we've added a column for native and adaptive species. For the shade and ornamental trees, evergreen trees, large deciduous shrubs, and then small deciduous and evergreen shrubs, we have a total of seventy-four native or adaptive species, seventy-four percent, excuse me. And then for the perennials, ground covers, and grasses, we have about sixty percent. So again, just trying to keep in line with wanting to make sure that what we're putting there, we're trying to do native and adaptive species. All right, I'll turn that back over. Thank you.
So, almost done, just want to wrap up really quickly, just in terms of scheduling and timing. The hope is that we are able to secure entitlements by late 2025, commence construction shortly after that. The hope is to start possibly partial demo of the office building later this year, and it's about a twelve-month construction, so about a year from, you know, late 2026, delivery of the first units, so that's the contemplated schedule. I think Mr. Street, he went through all the zoning requests that we have before you. I can get into some of the details if you want about the height and sort of the setbacks, but, you know, we can, if folks want information on that. Should point out that, so we started this process back in the fall. There was a development program that we were considering, and so we actually did a pre-application conference with the plan commission. Before we even did that, we reached out to the school districts. We realized we've got one-hundred-and-twelve new units coming onboard, and so wanted to reach out to them and make sure that they didn't have any concerns about one-hundred-and-twelve units, and they were actually very positive meetings. They appreciated the outreach. They're actually excited about it because they've got, they're seeing declining enrollment, so there's an opportunity here to help with the population of the schools. Approximately, I guess it was around the Fourth of July holiday, we did reach out to the homeowner association executive boards. We had a call with the executive boards of Bristol Estates and Bristol Place, kind of, again, trying to get out ahead of the project, see if they have any concerns, talk them through the projects so they had a better understanding, so I think that was a very good, good productive call. And then finally, we, we did get the preliminary sign-off from the Bannockburn Fire Protection District that everything works, fire trucks can move throughout the site, and at this point, they don't have any concerns. So just in terms of, you know, what, how is this good for Deerfield? We see this, you know, a lot of opportunities. You heard me allude to before. We've got this office building that is, that's been sitting vacant, has been declining over the past several years, so it's a redevelopment opportunity generally. That also kind of ties into sustainability as we see it. My client often says that, you know, one of the most sustainable things that you can do is to reuse an existing building, and so that's what we're doing here. It's actually going to be an all-electric building, which it seems to be the trend in development these days. They're looking at high-efficiency heat pump systems for the building, so again, it's an adaptive reuse of an existing building with a lot of sustainable features. We also see, as an overall basis, traffic generation. It's going to be less than peak of the office, so less traffic coming from this if this, if this building were occupied with office uses. We substantially reduce the impervious surface, which helps with stormwater management, stormwater control for the surrounding, surrounding area. Traffic impact, stabilizing the tax base. Right around now, the property generates about three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in real estate taxes. Once everything's stabilized, building is fully occupied, we're estimating it's going to be about six-hundred-and-sixty-thousand dollars, so you're going to see about a three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand-dollar increase in real estate taxes. Roughly sixty-five percent of the tax bill goes to your two school districts, and so really, really positive impact there in addition to any impact fees. So again, a good opportunity to enhance and stabilize the village's tax base. And then finally, what we talked about is just improving connectivity, and this is something that the village, village staff asks us to look at. We've worked very, very hard with our consultants to come with, come up with a safe opportunity to connect Brickyards Park to our development and also further southward, and it also provides good connectivity to the metro station, which is just to the southeast. The gentleman was talking about sort of transit-oriented development, and this is a great opportunity. It's a, it's a short distance to transit options here, and, you know, hopefully helps prop up metro a little bit, get them a little bit more ridership. So all in all, we think it's a, it's a positive project for the village. We have our entire team here, so if there are engineering questions, traffic questions, architectural questions, we are happy to answer them.
Thank you. Maybe, Dan, you want to address what you did? Enter, we're not quite ready for you. I'm going to ask Dan Brinkman to step up. Stay tuned, I'll get to you, I promise.
Good evening. Dan Brinkman, Senior Transportation Engineer, Gilhall Hamilton Associates. We did an initial review of the traffic assessment for the development, and then the engineering department asked us to look at two other, two other tasks. One was to do a signal warrant study at Fountain View Drive to see if a traffic signal was warranted there. It's not, not by a long ways, unfortunately. The second piece was a speed study, because we really want to understand when you're pedestrian crossing the road, what you're looking at is how far away is that car? Can I see them? Can I make this crossing safely? Probably to no one's surprise, traveled speed is quite a bit higher than the posted speed on Finkston, particularly traffic coming down the hill over the bridge. And as a result of that, what we'd recommended and what the developer has implemented is moving the crossing from the south side of the intersection of Fountain View to the north side. It does a couple of different things. One, it allows you to put a refuge island out in the middle, so you can make your crossing in two separate movements. There'll be push buttons out in the middle to activate the lights as well. It also gives that people, or gives the pedestrian a better view of traffic coming down the hill where they're coming faster, it gives them better sight distance there. It's really the crossing from the development over to Brickyards Park when you're moving from the inside of the curb to the outside of the curb where the sight is, your sightline is limited as the road curves away from you. But in general, you know, that, that's pretty much it. I think the crossing with the push-button flashers, as well as the flashing lights on the advanced warning signage, is about the best situation you could hope for trying to cross a three-lane road like Finkston here.
So there are a couple of things that you just said that I want to ask you about. One was the flashers. If you could talk to us about how that works?
Sure.
And the other thing that you said was sightline. If you could address that, too.
Sure. Okay, so the, the proposal is that the crossing would have, in addition to the sign, static signage, there'd be pedestrian-activated push button, and you'll get, they call it RRFB, Rectangular Rapid Flashing Beacon, that will be both at the crossing itself as well as on the advanced signage. So it gives both the oncoming traffic that much more notice that the pedestrian crosswalk has been activated and that they should expect to see pedestrians there.
How far?
So that's like what we have on Deerfield Road.
Deerfield Road, right.
My boat would.
How far from the entrance are those signs on either side? Like, do you know how many feet away they are?
I do not know off the top of my head, but there's a, there's, as more engineers, there's a formula for that.
Yes, I'm sure there is.
Which entrance, Dan? The entrance to?
That's across from Bristol. There are going to be advanced signs on either.
No, no, I understand that, but how far is it? To the daycare, okay.
Yeah, so, sorry.
It's on one of the things.
Yeah, the, the concern is, or not the concern, the point I'm making is, if those, if we know folks are going forty miles an hour or faster, and those signs are ten feet away from the entrance, those signs aren't going to do any good, right?
They're, they're a good distance, right. They're, they're, they're a pretty good distance. They're, they're, they're pretty good distances. I want to say they're probably close to 250 feet, somewhere in that neighborhood, north and south of the pedestrian crossing at Fountain View.
Okay, that's what I was trying to think about.
How long that thought, sorry to interrupt. Can we do school zone, speed school zone? I mean, Primrose is kind of like a school.
Not a school, you can't do it.
It isn't. It's a daycare.
Right, I get that, but we still have little people...
Do we have, do we have an option under state statute to do something different?
To add some signage.
But I haven't heard...
Frozen presence, slow down, you know, things like that. I know what you...
Dangerous crossing, whatever, whatever.
Excuse me, but I don't believe we've heard that there's any plan to bring children from the daycare across the street to the park. They will have their own play area there. The crosswalk is for the residents who would live in the apartment building who would want to cross to the park.
Yes, but I was using that as a point of reference. Yes, I understand.
But that's, that's the means to get motorists to slow down. Whether it's the daycare kids walking across, or it's the middle school kids who are living in the rental apartments with their parents walking across, or even just 25-year-olds walking across.
But if it's not a school zone, if it's not a school, I don't see how we make it...
Well, that's, that's a different issue, and we'll talk about that when, after we hear public comment and ask questions. But I do want to address that, too. That was the signage, but I may not have allowed you to talk about the, oh, we talked about flashing lights, okay.
Okay, so the, the flashing lights, again, they'll be activated by push buttons, pedestrian push buttons. They have a rapid flashing pattern. It's supposed to be, it's better than just a single static flashing light. These will only be flashing lights when the crosswalks are activated, so they don't blend in and become kind of like white noise if they flashed all the time. There's a lot of telemetry and what figures out to get set up for exactly how long it'll flash and how long the crossing needs to be, and that gets done, and again, is a piece of that where the advanced signs go, and the, again, the flashing lights will be on there. Pedestrian crossings, both mid-block or at unsignalized or uncontrolled intersections. State has a guideline for that. Basically, if you just look at a three-lane section on a road like Finkston, the posted speed limit that it has carries, normally what the state would suggest or recommend is just static signs at the crossing, as well as advanced crossing. So I think putting the push-button activated flashers on there is a good idea.
That goes above and beyond, yeah.
Goes above and beyond what the minimum is, and it's really a good idea out here.
The other thing that you mentioned was sightline.
Okay. Sightline, there's, basically, as a pedestrian, you want to see the car coming, and you want to be able to make that decision as to whether I can make my crossing...
Or as a motorist.
So there's, there's two different sightlines.
Coming out of the parking lot.
Right. We're talking about, initially, we're talking about the pedestrian sight distance to see the oncoming car. That distance wants to be more than the stopping sight distance for the oncoming car, and it is. The pedestrian has enough sightline to make it to the pedestrian refuge. They actually have enough sightline to make it all the way across if they want to make one crossing.
Okay.
What was your second question, I'm sorry?
Or vehicle sightline, as opposed to pedestrian sightline. If you want to, say you're coming out, and you want to turn left on Finkston to go south, you know, there are cars that are coming over that hill from your right to your left.
Right. We didn't look at sight distance, there wasn't a sight distance study done at the driveway. I can tell you the sightline's not too bad looking to the north around the curve. If you're looking south and you want to make that left turnout, there's some really overgrown trees and shrubs that probably want to be trimmed up or taken a look at just to improve that sightline as you're looking south.
That's something that we can all easily deal with, but I'm more concerned about the curve and the hill.
Okay.
In terms of the sightline.
You know, Dan, there is a current, where the island would be, that would break up the crosswalk. There's currently an island there, and it's just striped pavement.
Right, it's just a painted island today.
Was the intent to leave it that way, or to do something more to it, to, you know, raise it, to put a curb there?
It would be a raised curb. It would be very similar to what you have out here on Deerfield Road. I can't remember the name of the cross street. But it'd be a raised curb island, it would be something that would protect pedestrians, it would be flat in the middle, so it's still accessible.
So it's a further separation.
It would be, it would be physical, physically raised, yeah. It would be a barrier island.
And the only other place we have this in town is at Maplewood Crossing Deerfield Road, is that correct?
Yeah.
There are two spots on Deerfield Road.
Deerfield and Pine.
Oh, with Pine, right.
But we don't have it on Willmont, where we have the other crossing to Corusso.
Right. Okay.
I have a question on the color of the lights that are flashing, only because I am somebody that uses the crosswalk lights between Maplewood Crossing over Deerfield Road. There are times of the day where the cars don't see the lights, so I'm curious to know what color. Are you talking about doing the white like we have on Deerfield Road? Are we, can we do a different color that would help in the middle of the lane?
White or orange is typical. Again, that's something that can be looked into. Most of them are kind of, yeah, they're like a white-orange.
There are times when I've tried to cross that the, the traffic just doesn't see, I can barely see it standing there, so that's why I'm asking the question.
I'd love to tell you that the, the push-button flashers are the perfect solution. Unfortunately, there's no, you know, I can't make, they're not magic signs, we can't make everybody stop, but the goal is to give them enough information so that they can slow down and stop for pedestrians and, you know, give the pedestrian, let them give fair warning that they're crossing the road.
Okay.
Ben, did you want to address school zone signage?
Yep. We are permitted to do a school zone near a nursery school. So the E-only vehicle code provides that a school zone can be public or private primary or secondary schools, primary, secondary school operated by religious institution, a public, private, religious nursery school. So this would be a nursery school, so it would be allowed so long as it's on a school day, when schoolchildren are present and so close that they're thereto that a potential hazard exists because of the close proximity of the motorized traffic. And then it would be the standard school hours, so from 6:30 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. But we could designate a school zone if we thought it was prudent to do so.
Andrew, I didn't forget about you, but I think someone from the applicant team, did you guys have something you wanted to?
I have more questions.
Yeah, yeah.
Are we doing trust?
We're going to, we're going to do Andrew, and then we're going to... Yeah. Questions.
I was just going to say, one quick thing regarding the sightlines. So by like, typical like, practice for, for what we do anyway at Daniel and Buck and Partners, is there's typically like a 12-foot offset from the property line, and you create another 12-foot offset from the drive, and you connect that triangle, and within that triangle, you don't want anything to be higher than 30 inches. So we've had our plants, our, all our proposed plants are below that area, and any tree that's within that area is going to be bringed up six feet. So you have, you should have plenty of clearance for that.
But that's the plantings you're talking about on this side, and I believe he's talking about on the other side of the road.
Gotcha. I thought you were talking about the entrance to the parking lot as well. I apologize.
But that's good to know, too.
Yeah.
So I'm going to ask for a public comment, and then we'll have all board ask any questions that we have, okay? Andrew.
Yes, well, thank you, Mayor Shapiro. Again, I did not object at all to having an apartment building there. I think actually a larger apartment building, using the entire site, putting up another building that would also be apartments might be a good idea. I just don't think this is a good place to shoehorn in a nursery school. I think there's other locations in the general area that would probably be better. A lot of office buildings are empty throughout Deerfield, going west towards where Walgreens is vacating. Who knows if Walgreens is going to be there at all, so there's a lot of locations in the area. Again, I didn't see their model of what their different schools, I noticed they have schools all over the country, of what time. If people come in, they drop off their kid, they leave in the morning, they come in in the afternoon, they leave. So again, you have a lot of people trying to make a left turn off of Finkston into the facility, people trying to make a left turn out, in possibly a very short period of time. They say it's going to be more staggered. I'm not sure, but, again, I agree with the apartments generating less traffic than the office if the office was full of the 450 parking places. Obviously, they're going to be having a lot fewer than that for the apartments. And again, the hill and curb presents a very unique hazard. I think that island and the flashing lights, and possibly, again, mentioning the school zone, I think that was a good idea. I think possibly having a school zone sign if they're trying to move the kids or whatever in the area out of the building, that they could have just turned on the flashing light to slow it down to 20 miles an hour when the flashing light is going. That would probably be the best way to do it. So I think that'd be better in terms of traffic. Again, I mentioned, have it closer to a stop sign, for example, a stoplight like at the entrance to Home Depot or Corporate 500 driveway in that general area. The other issue that I have is that, I mean, they're working with the building, they don't have that much flexibility. One question I have is, will the windows stay the same, or will the windows be changed so that residents can open their windows?
They'll be changed. They'll look the same, but they'll be operable.
Okay, so they'll be able to open, so it'll be different, okay. That was a question I had with how the building would be changed. So, some of the issues I had with that are the, whether the garages, as I said, if people in the winter are going to have to go out, trudge through the ice and snow if it's been cleared or not cleared, and how they would plow in front of the driveways removed from snow from in front of these, these garages. Again, the snow removal and things, how that would be handled, that could be a difficult situation.
I'm going to ask you to wrap it up.
Yeah, okay. Again, the, one other problem I have is with the, I believe they're proposing four charging stations, is what I saw. I think that compared, out of 118 units or whatever it is, I think they really need more than that. At least they're pre-wired so they could add it later if the demand comes up, just a little bit more.
No, you're out of time. So, thank you for your comments. Appreciate it.
Yeah, I just wanted to finish up with one thing here, and that is that, I don't know if you're familiar with this, it, I think it's Northside Parkway and Dundee and Wheeling has much nicer amenities. I think that this, there's a lot of things they could do with this that, we'll keep it basically the same as this, but just add a few more, another building, a swimming pool, a few more amenities to this site, and...
All right, Andrew, thank you for your comments.
Possibly a parking garage underneath where the school would be where it drops down to a lower elevation.
Got you.
So, but overall, yeah, overall, yeah. Overall, I think it's a good idea to convert it to apartments. I think that's a good idea overall at this location.
Any other public comment? All right, let's open up to the board.
Dan?
Yes, Larry.
If, if I may.
Yeah.
I'd like to commend the petitioner. I think there are a lot of attractive components that have been added to make this development possibly a reality. I think there are a lot of areas, well, there are areas, I won't say a lot, but there are areas that give me significant concerns. But my primary concern deals with the pedestrian crossing over Finkston. Whatever mitigation components that have been added are mitigation components. They don't solve the problem, to me. It's a very dangerous pedestrian crossing. You can add a refuge island, and someone who may not be able to walk quickly is going to get stuck in the middle. Hopefully, drivers, you know, stay in their lanes, and if you ever notice, most islands like this on curved streets have black curbs. The black curbs are black because tires have gone up on there. So that's, like I said, a mitigation, not a resolution. The yellow flashing lights, I think Jen has said, you know, she, she has concerns about them. I see on a regular basis going up and down Deerfield Road multiple times a day, when the lights are flashing, if people don't, drivers don't see a pedestrian, they don't even brake. They continue at full speed. The other problem I see is, yes, it's a 30 mile an hour posted speed zone. We all know people don't drive 55 on the Edens. However, we're talking about doing something to put pedestrians in harm's way. And at this point, I'm not ready to do that. We can talk about increased enforcement of speed zones, but we all know, we're not going to have police involvement on this street 24/7. So, again, it's a mitigation component, it's not a resolution of what I consider to be a dangerous situation. I see cars speeding, racing, and with or without a police present, it's not going to absolve what I consider to be a dangerous situation. So with all the attractive components that I think are in place, I'm not ready to approve this petition with that dangerous component lingering.
Understood. I'm going to just, I'm, one of the things that I'm going to do, Andrew, is let the board do its thing, and then you guys will have the floor to address comments. I think it will flow a little bit easier if we do it that way, okay? Let's go from left to right, Elaine.
So I just, I have questions. Can I ask?
Yeah.
Questions? So if, I don't know, sorry, I don't remember your name, Howard, if you could help me out, where I was reading the drive aisles instead of 24 feet might be reduced to 23 feet, which ones are those, or are they all of them internally?
No, the, the majority, almost all of them are 24 feet and meet their criteria. The only one that's slightly narrower is the one at the north end of our amenity space in front of those garages, which are really going to have minimal traffic on it and access to the garages. And we can make it bigger, it just means less green space, so we just...
Okay. Because I was concerned about the traffic internally. And where the 30 employees for the nurse, for the daycare center, where are they supposed to park?
They'll, they'll primarily park on the north and east side.
Of the daycare.
Yeah.
So the, within the property itself, there's 51 cars, and they surround the property, so the employees will park on the north, they'll park on the east, a little bit on the south if needed, so that leaves the majority of the spaces adjacent to the entry and to the front for the parents for pickup and drop off.
Okay. All right, I'll come up with a...
Go ahead. You're good. Well, first of all, I think this is a terrific use for this building. I agree that the most sustainable way to do a building is to use an existing building and retrofit it. I think that this lends itself to apartment loft living, and I think it's a very clever way to utilize it. I do have a couple of questions, and one of them relates to the breaking up of the property into two separate properties, even though both are in the PUD. So the access road off of Finkston then goes solely through the Primrose property. Do you have to have an easement? That will be part of the agreement of all of this, that traffic coming into the parking, into the apartment building property will have to access through the other property, correct?
Correct. There will be a declaration which governs both properties, and there will be a mutual cross-access drive aisle, park, drive aisle and access easement for the benefit of both parties.
Okay, and then to add to, a little bit to what Elaine was, was inquiring about, in terms of the parking for the daycare, do you anticipate any issues with people who live in the apartment building wanting to park on the daycare and vice versa? Is there going to be some kind of traffic direction, calming rules about who gets to park on which property? Do you anticipate any kind of an issue just because they will be two separate properties now?
Sure, I think, so, first of all, the, the parking spaces on the south of the Primrose property?
Yes.
That's going, they're going to be for pickup and drop off.
Exactly.
And I think that there will be perhaps signage for Primrose parking only.
Okay.
As I think you heard Howard say, we have a surplus of, I'm going to say, 20 or 30, yeah. And so, we, we really don't anticipate that there's going to be a, you know, kind of a, a cross demand. We, we both park ourselves very well.
Okay.
So we don't really see that as an issue.
There'll be a mechanism to protect.
And it's our standard practice that is a condition, and it's actually on my list of ones, I was going to make sure that goes into any motion.
of ones, I was gonna make sure that goes into any motion, would be that, uh, prior to, you know, to getting a building permits, that the village attorney would approve, uh, any covenants, conditions, restrictions on the property to, to make sure that addresses these issues. From this, from, from the parking issue-
Right.
I would hope that it would address snow issues-
Right.
And so forth, so that way, it's contemplated, uh, and also making sure there's mechanisms in which to share costs, so that's laid out, who's doing what, how it's paid for, so we don't, as a village, have a problem down the road where two owners point the finger at each other, and the ones who are stuck in the middle of having to referee is us. So, that's, that's standard when we have a PUD with multiple lots.
Okay, great, great, that was, and then I did have a, another question in, because Bob Phillips isn't here tonight, one of the, he had a memo in our packet talking about, um, a recommendation he made about how the water line is supposed to work in the property, to have a circle around the building. Will you be able to meet our specs in that regard?
Yes, we've had a number of discussions with him, and we've engineered for a water loop.
That's terrific, thank you.
A loop water main.
A loop water main, exactly. I know that's something we like to have, you know, when we have any development. I was actually at the property today, and I was driving around looking at it. The slope is not only extreme, it's unusual, and it's kinda wonky off of the north end. Were you planning on leveling that out, doing anything to it? It's, it's, it's kind of like a serpent mound at this point. I'm assuming you had noticed that.
Yeah. It's not-
So, the, the actual work we're doing, the development, is all within the asphalt areas that are currently now. We're not taking any of the-
So, we are going to maintain the good drainage-
Correct.
That we're getting from our serpentine mound-
Correct.
As we develop.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'm sure that's a comfort to the neighbors, to the people in the neighboring developments. It is a very unusual pitch on that property.
And just as a reminder to the board, much of the site is part of a formal landfill site.
Yes.
It's part of the Brickyards.
Yes.
So, the, the building is not on that, but there's, that, there's site issues that they have to deal with in their civil engineering that deal with that subsurface condition. And we know they're aware of it, we've told them they're aware of it, and they, they believe that they've got a way to address it.
Well, I, I found that access through the site and around the site and looking at what I had seen for your drawing, and the way the site lays out now, will work very well. And access through the other properties for people to have a pedestrian way to get to the train station, very efficient. I'm glad that that's there, um, and I, I think it will be a terrific addition to the community, so I'm all for it.
Can we go back?
Yeah, I was gonna do that before we go to this side.
Okay, thank you. Um, who's the target market?
Hi, my name's Paul Fishbein, I'm with 155 Group LLC, the developer. Um, first of all, I did wanna address your question. There's obviously going to be redoing of the parking lots, and some of that is gonna get leveled out in terms of the, the whoop-de-doo's that you've got right now. Um, and, um, so that's gonna be cleaned up. In terms of the target market, um, first of all, because it is, I've walked it, it's a, from door to platform of the Metro is seven minutes, um, in a casual walk, could be less if you were in a hurry. Um, there's a lot of demand for young professionals who want to live in the North Shore, who are working, um, even with a flex schedule, needs to go downtown, um, and wanna be here, and so we do see demand for that. Um, there's also a significant number of empty nesters who basically can't sell their homes, not because of the market, man, market is there, there's a huge shortage of single family homes, they just have nowhere to go. And, um, I've had friends and, and people that have approached me or are aware of the project, saying, "We're really interested because, you know, we're here half the year, and we'd love to stay in the community, we just don't have a place that's nice and, and new," and so we do have some of that. Also, because of the proximity, um, to all the schools, um, we do think that we may have some, some younger families, um, that will get into the school district. I personally met with the, both school districts, and they were extremely encouraging, they were explaining the, the drop in, um, students projected forward, and so having additional facilities that can house people more in walking distance to two of the schools, as you're probably aware, and Brickar Park is, is certainly a major park with all the soccer that's going on. Um, I did wanna say, while I'm in front of all of you, and I think there are more questions, um, and trustee, I understand your concern on the crosswalk, I want you to all maybe understand, maybe you're not aware of this, this was requested by Deerfield for us to try and put in this crosswalk. Um, there is a significant expense to do this, that expense is put on us, and frankly, um, we were doing, we've done everything that we can, and we've had two different engineering traffic companies looking at this to create the safest condition that can be created. Um, and keeping in mind that the number of times that this is going to be used is somewhat limited, because we are not feeding into a school. Um, it wasn't mentioned, but Primrose, none of their children, not one child, will be going and walking across that crosswalk. Parents literally have to go in, check the children in, hand, and bring them back to the vehicle, and leave the site. And so you are not having little children unattended, it's just people that are living there. Frankly, the real beneficiary is Bristol, with the kids living there who wanna go over to Portillo's for a shake-
Right.
And don't have a great way to get there. Um, this'll certainly be an enhancement for them. Um, I think in this presentation, was it taken out with the travel distances? Um, but all those distances have been looked at, and, and they exceed the, um, distances that are required by all proper engineering standards. So, it is a very safe condition that has been created at, at a significant expense. Um, I've walked it and driven it, the sightlines especially, that, let's face it, the big one's when you're coming over the bridge and you're going downhill.
Right.
The way the angle is, the driver has an incredible view of Fountain View Drive. It would be very difficult to miss a flashing signal. Um, it's much less the people going north on Finkston coming around that I, I think that would typically be the concern after looking at that intersection, it's the other way. And basically, you're, you're way above and looking down, you've got a great bird's eye view of that intersection, um, and I think that crosswalk becomes much safer because of the angles. And again, we had our engineering firm look at, the village hired an engineering firm to look at it, to confirm that this really was a safe condition. Um, if, if, if the village decided that this isn't something you wanna do, we're more than happy not to do it. Um, but we, we do think that what has been put together with a lot of research, is a very safe condition.
Anything else on the left side?
Yes, one more question, I'm sorry.
Take your time, take as many questions.
Bike racks?
Yeah. Good job.
Yeah, we have, we have, um, if you look closely at the drawing on the north side, there's a room immediately to the, um, north entrance that is a bike room with interior, with indoor, um, bike storage, and then there'll also be additional bike storage in the 94 garages. And we have 112 unit and 94 garage spots. So, we've got lots of places, um, for bike parking. Um, somebody asked the question regarding charging, I think it was the nice gentleman over here. Um, we're planning on putting in high-speed charging. I personally have had, I drive an electric car, um, I live in a single-family home, it's real easy, I park in, I'm there all night. The reality is that when you're in an apartment building, you can't leave your vehicle, you can't put enough charging stations. We're putting in very rapid high-speed chargers, similar like Tesla has, where somebody can get 80% charging in 30 minutes, and in doing so, um, it becomes very realistic where people can truly share these chargers and use it, and we will prohibit people from parking there and leaving it, they will actually get charged, um, the way the metering is, they get excess charges if they just stay in the spot and use it as a parking spot. So, we've looked closely at it, um, and there's advancements now in the technology. But the big thing is wiring this for the, for the rapid chargers versus the, the standard home chargers.
But the garages will also have electricity, correct?
The, the garages will not have charging within the garages. Um, it is not required, um, in any of the ordinances for this, and the electric capacity for that would be, would be huge, astronomical.
Well, not for the fast ones, but if you just had the wiring with the potential for somebody to, no?
It's not capable of doing it, and it, it's something, that's why we're spending, frankly, the, the significant additional cost to create the rapid chargers, because that's what people really do wanna use-
Right.
Um, and, and that's how we're solving it.
And you would just regulate it so they took turns?
Correct, and, and if, and if they're not doing that, they're actually getting charged for it.
Right.
So, there's an economics, if you will, disincentive to, to be a hog.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesse?
Yes, um, with all that was just discussed about the pedestrian crossing, I, I appreciate the thought and expense that you have gone through to figure out the best possible solution in the, in the village as well. I just, one question on the, the placement of the pedestrian crossing. It was, it seems to me was moved sort of further, uh, up or further north, so that the sightline would improve, but isn't it sort of closer to the cars than coming downhill?
In, in terms of a total distance, um, that was recommended by the village's engineer. Um, we looked at it, and the two things, I think the single greatest thing that was accomplished is, the way the lanes are set up, we now have an area of refuge that can be created very easily, without changing the traffic flow, I think was pointed out, that is painted out right now. But by doing the raised concrete with the area of refuge, that greatly enhances, um, the safety of it, and that was recommended. That's why, if you looked, our rendering has it on the south side-
Yeah.
It's, it's gotten moved to the north side, because that was a request by the village, and in the studies, I think you're looking at a distance of, uh, two carwhees, you, you know, you're probably looking at a 30-foot difference, maybe, between the two sides, um, but it becomes much more visible. And the other thing is that it also eliminates, um, pedestrians, because the fact is that if they're going from the property on the south side, they're crossing, and then they're crossing both drive lanes of Fountain View, now they're avoiding that, and they're going from our side directly to where their destination, which is Brickar's Park.
Yeah.
So, it, it seemed like a very logical trade-off. The difference in travel distance, um, I don't think was as significant as picking up an area of refuge right in the center to really enhance the safety.
Yeah, that-
That, that's a huge plus.
Yeah. Ken, did you, um, were the police consulted as to like, safety and-
So, the engineering standards are which, what we follow, are what Dan and his team looked at, you know, the police department, 'cause that's ultimately what determines the decision, is the engineering standards. And I think the police department, you know, looked at this, and in general, they would support the engineering standards, because there's a reason for those standards being selected.
Okay, just wanted to make sure that they were signed off on it as well.
You're trying to get to the site plan.
Trying to close it. But to the, but to the extent, Dan, that you want the police department to, to take a look at that for, for next reading or the next consideration, Jesse happy to do that. I think what they're gonna say is, there's a reason for the engineers-
You looked at it, yeah.
There's a reason for the engineering standards, but I don't, I don't wanna forego that opportunity either.
Sure.
There we go.
Um, a couple of questions, should the project be approved, just in terms of construction? Has, uh, ownership contemplated, uh, traffic related to construction coming on Finkston kind of during rush hour? 'Cause I, I know as experience, like the Finkston-Lake Cook Light, um, can, can back up, it's somewhat of a bottleneck, and, you know, during the morning, rush hour traffic in particular, so-
Yeah, so, you know-
Have it that far?
Yeah, we have. Um, the question was actually asked by one of the neighborhood groups, and, um, one of the things, first of all, both entrances, actually, if you spend time at the property and have driven it, Deer Lake is actually the much more pleasant by a lot. Um, if you're going in and out of that property using Deer Lake, it's much faster, way easier to get in and out of.
Okay.
And, um, in terms of the construction, um, when Primrose is, before it is under roof, um, we're certainly going to control that traffic and minimize the traffic, and have our construction people push more towards Deer Lake to minimize that. Um, but in, in terms of overall, this is a rare property to have access to two roads leading to signalized interchanges, and, and frankly, um, that's, that's a huge benefit that we're looking at. Um, there was a question regarding landscaping, it's actually the neighbor's property whose landscaping has significantly overgrown to the south of the driveway, that, um, obviously, if the, if the village could get them to cut that back or remove some of that, um, to open up that sightline, that would be nice. Um, it's not on our property, it's on the property to the south. But yeah, we're, we're definitely gonna do that. The good thing is that the, we've got such a significant amount of parking that we will have construction, um, and we've already told the neighbors, we'll have the construction workers parking on the east side of the building and entering it, just to keep those construction workers away from the residents.
Yeah, I was anticipating my question.
And we're hap, we're happy to do that, and, and that's not problematic at all.
And the, uh, office development adjacent to, my directions are kind of screwed up here, but I guess it would be southeast, right? Is there, with the, is there any mitigation that's required to prevent any, as far enough away?
No, it's, it's, we've got a huge landscape buffer, um, between our property and their property that, that kind of addresses that. Um, one thing that I brought up, uh, I don't know if you can see this or not, if there's a way to make it larger. Do you know, Howard?
Now, it's, you're in full view.
Okay, but if you look at this drawing, and, and we've furnished all of this, you can see some of the travel distances in the sightline, um, to the intersection. This was one that was done before it was moved to the north, um, but all of these sightline distances have been looked at. The actual distance of where you can see it from a vehicle, because of the raised element, is even far beyond what is shown in this drawing. And I encourage anybody to go drive over that, and you'll see that it's, it's a clear view of the intersection.
Thank you. Um, last question for Primrose, out of curiosity, I, I, you know, in the packet, I know that you did your, uh, real estate studies and understand why Deerfield would be a desirable place to, to set up the, uh, the preschool, the daycare. So, my, this is a greenfield construction, right?
Yes.
So, if you can help me understand why this site would be, is most desirable, and if you looked at other sites as well in your evaluation, I'd be curious to understand that.
Well, I think the, the, you've, we've got a combination, right? We've got the, uh, the retail that we know is there, right, that also comes, some of our traffic concerns, but we've got the new apartments that are coming right behind it. So, we kind of, our trade area, this kind of sits right in the middle of what our analytics has, as our, our target trade area. Our trade area goes north and it goes southeast. So, it's kind of sitting right in the smack dab in the middle of what we calculated our trade area to be. That also encompasses a three-mile ring, but the, the center of that trade area is smack dab where, where our, so we couldn't have drawn it any better, as from a, from a centric standpoint. So, from visibility, from people going to and from the highway, dropping off, picking up, those types of things, a, along with, uh, you know, income and, uh, affluence and, and, and really kind of the focus on, on childhood. We, we really target, uh, a 25, 2,000 to 2,500, uh, number of children, zero to four. Our trade area, the way we have done that, again, right smack in the middle, we have almost doubled that. So, even in our analytics suggests that, uh, this is right where we should be, so.
Thank you.
Visibility and, and the right demographics. Any other questions?
Howard, could you go to the rendered site plan? Howard?
Rendered.
It's the rendered one?
The rendered, all the way from the beginning?
The second slide from the beginning showed the site plan, and then there was the rendered site plan?
Oh, sure.
Almost, almost, it's one right before that, I think. One more. There you go. Okay.
Bob?
Thank you, Mr.
Bob?
Okay, I, first of all, I think I'm probably the closest to this project. I live in Briarwood Vista, and, um, I am a veteran of the Plan Commission. Uh, I've, seven years in Plan Commission, and five years as chair, uh, working with two extraordinary people in Dan Nakahara and Jeff Reichardt, and, uh, following, in, uh, in the chain of, of chairman, uh, where Al is now, Al Braumberg, and, uh, they did a tremendous job. I, um, went to their homeowners' meeting in, uh, the fountains Thursday, because I wanted to interpret how we go about accepting a project like this, and what we consider, and, uh, as is typical with homeowners' associations, uh, I- And as is typical with homeowners associations, I said, did you get a chance to talk about it? And they said, no, it's a done deal, we don't have anything to say. And I said, that's why we have these hearings, so that you can come and talk about it. And we go in and out of Fountain View many, many times each day and we've watched this project take root and we know that at first, some of our people said, well, you put a stoplight, a red and green stoplight where your warning light is and that'll take care of it. Well, that was something that our traffic people turned down and rightly so, but we think that a flashing light, pedestrian-actuated flashing light with distances that they would see it, especially on the downslope from Lake Cook around to Waukegan, on what we call, what we lovingly call Kate Finkston, because it, one becomes the other, is the proper way to do it. And I don't think it is really designed entirely for the school kids because as was pointed out, they can't walk there, they don't walk there. But a lot of people from Bristol Estates and the Bristol homes back there do, they take their bicycles across, they go into the shopping center, they, heaven knows where they go. But there are a lot of them and we need to make it safe. The island helps a bit, but I think definitely having a flashing, pedestrian-actuated flashing yellow light or orange light, whatever you call it, is the proper way to do it. And it's a necessity in my way of thinking. Without it, I think it's unsafe, totally unsafe. I think the project is right. We have disappearing primary and daycare schools. There is one at, it is lost in the development of Ven Point over on Sanders and Deerfield. The one that pertained to Walgreens is not as important now because there is not as much Walgreens left there. And I don't know, did they take the school building down? Was that part of it or is that still there?
Something that's still there.
Anyway, it's much less important, so this is an important addition to what we have there. And save for the flashing light, I think it's a great advantage. I would strongly advise, at least for my benefit and for my neighbors in the fountains, that that stay there. I'm not sure who puts that in, whether we do or you do, but I think it's extraordinarily necessary.
Bob, did you have any, thank you for that. Did you have any questions that you wanted to ask the applicant?
No, I think I expressed it rather strongly that it should be there.
Jen?
So my first question is, and I think this is more for staff, is where does this line up in our housing demand study that we were doing earlier this year and how does this fall with what?
So I'm gonna let, as Andrew's walking up to answer that question, I think the answer to the question is adding a variety of housing is always good and the housing study would say that. So lofts, single-family homes, apartments, adding a variety is what we should be doing.
Correct. So the housing study really emphasized, as long as you have the variety of housing. So we do not have the loft-style apartments that are being presented here, that's an entirely new type of housing stock. So for that reason, I would say it's consistent with the housing plan and a product that we would need according to that plan.
And when we talked about number of units, how, where are we on that? Because I know we've got several projects.
Yeah, so we have about 700 approved and the plan was right around that number.
That's what I'm thinking.
So in total number, you're correct to think that we've kind of hit that market number, but the caveat to that was, for instance, 150 of those units are age-restricted senior housing in the SLIF. So that's separate. Zion Woods, 25 units, totally different product. 42 single-family homes, also very different. So that's why you can't just look at the number 700 or 800, you have to look at the type of product that's being delivered.
Right.
So again, that's why the loft-style apartment, entirely different product, we have not seen that, that's not the townhome at Ven Point or the development in the back of your remote continent, all different type of products. And that's what I think this board should be looking at in terms of comparing it to the housing study that we completed. As long as we're getting variety of housing and different products and particularly, and then if you add affordable as part of that as well, then we are consistent with the plan and there's a need for that.
Perfect, I just wanted to make sure. The, okay, the only other comment that I was kind of curious about with Primrose, because there's been a lot of discussion here about that blinking light, I actually think the blinking light solution is a good idea. I run up and down there, that's how we do a lot of speed work for our marathon trainings and I hope that it will slow people down because they'll see something instead of nothing. My question is, is I realize that kids aren't walking to the school, but you might do a little field trip or picnic in that park if you've got that many kids at your facility, you might have the kindergartners or the after-school kids walk accompanied across there. Is that correct to assume?
So typically, we have a plan for that in the facility that we have, usually in more urban areas where you are limited in the size of your play area, you try to locate and co-locate close to a park where you could have the children traverse safely. We don't have the issue here because of the size, so that's typically not factored in. Can it be once in a year or something, that's up to the director of the school? Yes, but we typically don't do that when we have the larger facilities to do it.
Okay, so then that answers the question, no, no, I know, I'm aware.
Okay.
It answers the question of how often the school's really gonna be using it. Okay, thank you. And then my only other question is, on the leasing, someone had said that, I'm just curious, are you offering short-term leasing there or is it just year leasing or what do you anticipate? Because a lot of people are selling their homes in Deerfield and not ready to leave the community, as you mentioned, and so I was just curious if that's a thought.
I mean, the current plan is fraud leases to be one-year leases at least. This is not, this is not meant to be short-term corporate, there won't be year and be, that's just not the market that we're looking to.
Okay, that's what I wanted to just check. Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Question for either Kent or Ben. I think we would have the opportunity to reexamine the pedestrian crossing if the petition, petitioner was to proceed with the project. And if it was working or not working or was able to be tweaked, that could be done by the village without the involvement of petition, or is that right?
I think that's true and Ben, it's a village facility crossing the public right away, so to the extent that we, whatever that might mean in terms of signage, signals, I think if it becomes a problem that we need to address, then if we could tweak it, we could.
Yeah, so we would always have an opportunity on village property to come back and make modifications ourselves. The issue is this is preliminary approval, we want to make sure that, you know, that we're laying out the conditions and we're laying out the plan the best we can now so that way the applicant knows for final approval what they're doing with their plans. So if there's something that's small that needs to be tweaked between now and final approval, we can do, but once we have final approval, then we're not gonna have an opportunity unless somehow we come up with a creative condition to make change, you know, to make the applicant make the changes to the crosswalk area. And then, but at once it's, we do our final approvals, village on our own, you know, on our own cost can certainly modify if it ever becomes an issue or if it's not proving to be effective.
But I would, so think about the underpass. Bob and his team have added like 17,000 different signs in the last year to indicate that.
We still get trucks.
And it still doesn't work.
Trucks still get stuck, right? So, but to answer your question, I think, should we approve this, I think then we go about to monitor it and make it as safe as we can. And if we need to add additional safety features, we would do that and that's what we would want to do.
Our Chair, Al Braumberg. Stepped up, Al.
Thank you, Mayor. Some of you probably know that before I was on the Plan Commission, I spent 17 years on the Safety Council.
Yeah.
And probably the thing I am most proud of that we accomplished when I was on the Safety Council was to put that flashing light in on Deerfield Road to allow people to get to Maplewood Park.
Right.
Before that, there was a light at Wilmot and a light by the railroad tracks and nothing to stop traffic in between and it was pretty much impossible to get to Maplewood Park. And there are 20,000 cars a day that go on that stretch of road, on Deerfield Road. I understand the traffic is, does drive too fast on Finkston and there's a decent amount of traffic, but it's nowhere near 20,000. But I do, and I agree with what Dan Brinkman said, that flashing light is not a perfect solution, but it really helps significantly on Deerfield Road and I think it'll significantly help here as well. I don't think, the petitioner didn't create this problem and so I don't know that they can solve it, but this is, this is an improvement and I think that we should absolutely have it done.
Thanks, Al. Any other comments from the board? I've got a couple. I'm very familiar with this location. I see this location every day when I go to work and sometimes like Jen, when I try to run up that bridge. The apartments, and I'm sorry, the office is vacant, it's not good, it needs to be readapted to a different use that will bring it back to activation. The, the idea of activating the office that's only 10% occupied now, I like and it would add another 100 units or so to our inventory that's coming online. I would caution us about that though, because if there's gonna be future housing in any of our two TIFs in the next couple of years, we got that we have to pay attention to as well. And that could be hundreds more. So I give credit for having the vision, to you guys for having the vision. But like Larry, I'm very concerned about the traffic. What we've learned is that this, that the traffic moves faster. It's 40 miles an hour on an average and it's 30 miles posted. I'm concerned about the speed of the traffic. I'm concerned about the pedestrian crosswalk. I applaud the efforts that you guys are willing to make. I'm concerned not only about the pedestrian, but also the sightline for parents who are driving in and driving out of the site with the speed of the traffic. There's a lot going on there. I always think about a young mom or dad who's got someone in the back with their Cheerios dumping in the backseat, they're distracted with their cup of coffee. There's a lot going on. We have motorists and a curve and a hill and 40 miles an hour. To me, that requires special attention. I don't know, I'm not convinced yet that the special attention can be properly addressed. I know there are others on this board who may think differently, but I'm concerned about it. So I share Larry's concern, not only with the pedestrian, but the ingress egress. Also, I would ask, I understand what you said about the fast-charging EVs, but we have 100, over 100 units in four EV chargers. I would ask for more of those EV chargers there. I think after you bring up a good point, we're not gonna have as many as maybe as you would wish, but I think we can do better than four. I'd ask you to look into that. The other thing is, if we even get past the safety concerns, which I have, let me talk about that again and then I'll go into the other stuff. This is next to, you know, a park, this is across the street from residential, so we have the likelihood that there will be pedestrians, that there will be bikers crossing to and fro. It's not like on the other side of the street, we don't have the residents, we don't have people using the park. So I think there will be those residents that will be using, that will want to cut through. So that is something else to think about. When you guys did meet across the street, or when you did meet with Bristol, I know you said that you did meet, what was the general feedback that you got?
Thank you, I appreciate your comments. The, in meeting with Bristol, they wanted to understand the traffic. As you're aware, we've done significant traffic studies. This development with both uses is a significant decrease in overall traffic in this site. Your point of people entering and exiting, we haven't given you that handout and maybe we can. Andrew, where's the handout? Would you mind distributing that?
Well, you look for that.
Yeah, but I think what you'll see with the handout is that the way Primrose is traffic, you have 13 people at intervalled times as people drop off or pick up, they're significantly spread out. And this is based on actual data, not projections or hopes, but on actual data. And so in terms of people leaving, the current drive configuration is actually, I believe it's two. Louis, two left turns, one right? It's two left turns and one right. That street and the way that the road and the entrance has already been widened significantly compared to a different one or a typical one. To enhance that left turn, if you're going towards Lake Cook Road, obviously the right turn is much easier than the left turn. But the left turn is wider and you do have very good sightline, other than frankly, the bushes that are overgrown right now. So assuming that is mediated. The distance from Finkston to this entrance is a significant distance. So as people are coming north on Finkston and a parent is, let's say, making a left turn to go to Lake Cook Road, then there is a significant distance to see that, to avoid it. This building has been there since 1987, moving 450 cars in and out at peak times. Our use, two things happen. One, Primrose's people are really spread out as they come and go to the property. And more importantly, the residence is a drastic change, especially with people now working from home. They're actually not, as most of us did for most of our careers, wake up early, hustle the work, come back at night. That's not happening. People have really changed their patterns. And so the traffic is greatly reduced from reality of this site compared to the office. And that was what the neighbors were really trying to understand. They didn't have that information. And after we gave it to them, there were some people that spoke. I think that the reaction after they heard all the information presented, they were much more comfortable. I have not received one call after that initial meeting and the public meeting with greater concern and none of those people showed up tonight because they just were not concerned after really understanding how this site is laid out. And we can't highlight enough the reality of people are gonna go to the path of least resistance. Deer Lake Road is the path of least resistance. That's where you really want to go in and out because it's the easiest and fastest to use. And if you live there or work there or come there all the time, you will use that because frankly, it's the better choice.
Got it, thank you. We'll take the handout, I have a couple more comments. In terms of, Howard, in terms of the design, I think you're doing the best with what you have, but I think that there, I'm not an architect, so I'm gonna fumble over what I'm gonna tell you. And if I say in an, in artful way, please excuse me. It would seem, could you like stand up so I could see you better? Thank you.
I didn't want to at the microphone at the same time.
I think that with the office building, and I know you have to work with what you have, but I think if there could be other architectural elements that could add to the building, like, I don't know what that is, but it seems like it's an office, it's an office building with now people living in it, as opposed to a residential building with people living in it. That's my impression.
Dan. I disagree. I think it looks shark. It's a loft building. It's got big windows and it looks just like it should. A loft.
I agree.
Okay.
The girl's hair.
You don't have to answer, I've already, the other thing, the other thing I would like to talk to you about is the.
Go ahead, Howard.
I'm still gonna try. Is the daycare, which is, which is, and again, I apologize for being inartful here, I think it looks really plain. And to me, I don't know what one could do to make it less plain, but that's just what my eyes telling me. So I know I just got a browbeating on the office building, so I take my chances of getting a second one on the daycare, but that, those are probably less concerning to me than the other safety issues, which I articulated a minute or two. of, to me than, um, the other safety issues, which I articulated a minute or two ago.
The difference is the daycare is really a residential style architecture. And as a transition to the residential to the, on the other side of things, it really makes a lot of sense. So it has a lot of detail, but the detail is done. It's, it's in the vertical rib of the wood exterior wall, the stone base.
Is there maybe a smiley could show, show us that maybe?
I don't have, do we have a good photo? I don't know.
It's cottage.
Mr. Mayor, one thing that Primrose uses this as a prototype. They've done this in many communities. I don't think that we've done a good job of showing you the images because if you look at this building closely, there's a lot of detail. There is some ornate aspects of it. And I've seen the building in person and it's a beautiful building. It is not a plain building by any means.
Yeah.
Let me go, there's one photo in this.
Yeah, there is a photo, but.
And maybe there's a better image at some point that we'll be able to see.
We will get you a plethora of images because the building actually exists elsewhere in the country. And so this isn't just an issue rendering. And we can get you pictures. But this gives you this one little picture, gives you an up close of the entrance.
Yep.
And this is, I don't want to say ornate, but it, it really has a lot of warmth to it, a lot of detail. It is not a plain, this is not a plain industrial looking building.
It's decorative.
At all.
I think what they should add is solar panels on the rooftop.
Oh, she's good.
That's, architecturally, that's what I would do.
You know what really enhances that corner of the property is the playground that wraps that building. Because now that corner of the property is just paving. There is a sea of asphalt and there will be green around this building and more green around the other building. And that will give it a totally different look.
We're actually adding over 600 trees and bushes.
Yeah.
To this site. So.
I don't have a problem with the landscape.
But, but I'm saying it, it, our goal is obviously.
Where credits do, et cetera. I just, um, those are my, my, my impressions.
And I appreciate the comments.
But that's more subjective. Obviously there are folks who feel differently than I do on my subjective feelings. I'm more concerned about the, uh, traffic situation, the pedestrian crosswalk, sightlines as, as you heard. And as Larry and I don't know if other folks feel the same way, those, those were, those are where my concerns lie.
But you know, I think it was really a cogent point that he made to the neighbors and to us, that we also need to look at the historical numbers of people who accessed this property and went in and out when that building was utilized as an office building. And for years and years, there was lots of traffic in and out. And to my knowledge, this has not been a terrible accident spot where we've had problems with people, you know, pedestrian or vehicular. So knowing that, that historically there was a great deal more pressure, vehicular pressure on this property makes me feel a lot more confident that this will work.
And this office use predated both Bristol Place, Bristol Court, and the Fountains.
Right. So we have a lot more going on.
Absolutely.
We have a lot more going on. And we have children, you know, we have children.
Right, you're putting kids in that spot.
You're putting kids in that spot. You don't have the office workers. Sometimes office workers act like children, but we have children. And, and, and we have young, you know, not young, they're young parents, but they're concerned about their children's safety as well as they should be, as well as we should be. So that's, that's what I, and I don't know if our police have looked at this. Jesse, I.
We'll, we'll get that for, should, depending on what the board does tonight, we'll get a follow-up comment from the police department on what's being proposed.
Dan, I have another last question. I don't know if this would be directed to staff or Public Works or what, but I don't know if we have it in town. There's yellow signs that are diamond shaped, they're square, but on a diamond shape that have lights on top and below, say pedestrian crossing ahead. I've seen them in other municipalities. I don't know if we have them, but I'm just thinking that if those were placed in advance of even the pedestrian lights, beacons that we were talking about, if that would aid in slowing traffic. Is, is that something?
You know, I, I, I'm envisioning things like Northwestern University, other places where there's a lot of pedestrians crossing if they have additional signage. I think adding additional signage is always great. I also want to take it away for a year and then put it back because people lose signage, they stop seeing it after a while. But I think we can, to the extent that we can oversign this, I think we should. I mean, if that's, the board wants us to do, I don't mean that in a negative way, but add more than would normally be required. I, I don't think there's anything that restricts us. It's our, that's our road, you know? Finkston Road right there is our road, so.
So I think that, I mean, you, you've heard from the developer, we're, they're willing to work with the village. I mean, this has been on the table, is something that was suggested from, you know, by staff early on, so we've obviously been working about it. Obviously there are, you know, concerns among the trustees about whether or not we do, whether or not you do this, what's the best way to do it if, if there is a path forward? So again, the, the developer is willing to work with the, with the village to accomplish whatever goals that they want to undertake here. I, I guess the only request is, because I've heard, I heard you, Mr. Mayor, say, you know, have the plan commission look at this again. And the sincere hope is that this doesn't.
I see that.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I misunderstood. We just, there's a strong desire to move forward with this and hopefully, you know, folks see the positive attributes of the project.
I think there, there was some talk, but I, I didn't say that my, that my concern was I wanted the police to look at it. Maybe you misunderstood that, or maybe I said plan, but I want the police to look at it.
Sure.
And then whether we kick this back to the plan commission or not, that's something we'll talk about in just a second.
Sure, okay.
Yeah. And, and I understand where you're coming from in terms of trying to move forward and stay on schedule. I, I get that too. EV stations. What's the board's thought on asking them to consider doing more?
I don't feel strongly. I think the, as it was explained, the, the use, the way that the parking garage will be used and the fact that they're rapid charging stations, they will have four of them. And how many underground spots are there that, that's where the charging stations will be located?
The charging stations will be located near the north entrance.
Yeah.
With accessibility by everybody. In terms of adding charging stations, I, I think that I understand your request and we can work with our engineers to try and add some more charging stations, assuming we have electric capacity on the site and potentially add some of those in addition. And that's something that we're happy to work with, with the, the board and staff during, between preliminary and final to further look at that and enhance it. Because again, I'm an electric car owner, I appreciate it. I think it's a great technology and it's something we want to be able to do. And it's something that we're happy to try and incorporate a little bit more of. We were told by our engineers, what we were doing was way above and beyond by putting in rapid chargers because nobody does that. They put in slow chargers. And a slow charger basically is accommodating in an evening, one person.
Right.
It takes eight hours to 10 hours to charge a car versus 30 minutes.
Understood.
So we can eliminate the rapid chargers and put in lots of slow chargers because, but that's not what we were advised to do. We were advised that we'd satisfy the consumer in a far greater way by putting in rapid chargers.
I, can you like have it ready so that if you needed to add more, so maybe you don't start with having added more, but you know how like you leave the plumbing open so you can add a wet bar in your basement? Can you do something like that? Or so you have the electricity there in case you need more as you're leasing these two?
Getting additional electricity from ComEd. It's something that we just have to look at with the engineers and, and see how we can accommodate it. And it's something that we'll, we'll strive to do based on the recommendation of the board asking to do better than we've already done.
Yeah, I don't think it's a deal breaker either. I'm with Jesse. I'd be, it's nice, but if you can, that'd be great if you consider it. But I, it certainly is not a deal breaker for me.
I think four is fine if it's 30 minutes and there's four of them. And you have a hun, roughly 100 garage spaces, theoretically, everybody's not going to have an E-car.
Right.
But if they did, we're, they're pretty close to accommodating every single person.
Do the math.
If it's used right every 30 minutes.
Can you again explain your disincentive to keep people at those charging stations?
I'm sorry to hear the question.
Can you, can you explain that disin, disincentive?
How do you regulate the use of the spaces?
Right. So what happens is if, if you've charged an electric car, you plug in your car.
Right.
Okay. And the meter starts running until it's charged. The software allows that if you don't, then disconnect your charge, okay, within a reasonable period of time, that you can start having a premium charge charged to you because you've stayed there. Now theoretically, somebody could go unplug their car and leave their car in that space, but we can put a camera on it and then it's a resident and, and deal with it. But the whole point, this does require, common charging requires cooperation among all people. And, and not that there won't be a bad egg, but the big difference is that most people do not install high-speed chargers.
Yeah.
Okay, at all. They put in these low, slow chargers and that really has very limited use for somebody to actually drive their vehicle and use their vehicle on a regular basis. That's why we're solving for it. And frankly, it's because it helps our leasing. There's going to be people who want to be in this complex, who have an electric car, and they can rapidly charge their car.
It's a great amenity.
On this handout, there are roughly 84 students signing in.
I, I had the exact, I did the same math. That, not everybody comes during peak times. So of the, first of all, their maximum student capacity is 195. They have different sized schools, but they, there are a lot of people who don't even especially fall within the peak. And that's why the numbers are.
But then this peak, in two hours, there's 85 drop, 85 kids signing in.
That's correct. Yeah.
They may not call, all come in different cars.
But, but keep in mind that many of these have more than, it's not one child, one parent. How many, think about the age spread that most people have, their kids are two to four years. So there's many people that bring multiple children to the facility. So it's not 85 cars, it's 85 students.
It's 40 cars.
What's the board's pleasure? Does the board want to take a, a vote on this? Kick it back to the plan commission? Vote with conditions? What's the pleasure?
Well, I don't think we kick it back to the plan commission. They voted six to zero to approve this. So I think we know the opinion of the plan commission. So I, I don't see the point of that.
I'm ready to move ahead.
I am too.
Yeah. So, Andrew?
Mayor and Board, just to remember, this is a preliminary PUD that's being considered tonight. So the PUDs are done in two steps. So if the board will accept the plan commission report tonight, it, it would go back to the plan commission once the developer is ready to present their final development plan. That would be on their timeframe. So in any event, even if you approve it, it does have to go back to the plan commission. If they would approve the final development plan, it goes back to the board. After that, we would consider drafting ordinances.
Understood.
That said, it is our, it is my recommendation that you do incorporate some conditions if you vote to accept the report tonight.
And that will be up to the movement? Or whoever's going to move this?
Yeah, and I can help.
The mover? The movement? And we have a list, but I would entertain a motion for whoever wants to move this forward, accept the recommendation with any conditions. And then we can talk about whether we want to add conditions and then that person will have the opportunity to amend their motion.
Well, I'm prepared to move approval of the report. Pending conditions.
Okay, which would be what?
I have no conditions. I personally would like to move approval of the report is written.
Okay, so there, but there are some conditions that we would recommend that are fairly standard.
I'm open to hearing them.
Yeah, so, and then there's some that are kind of unique to this property that was actually recommended by the plan commission.
Okay.
So one of which is that, um, one condition that was suggested by the plan commission, because there's office uses and office leases that are still active in the building and will be continuing, is that, that the owner may not extend the leases.
Correct.
That are non-residential.
Yes.
They may not enter to, into non-residential new leases.
Yep.
Or allow the non-residential uses to be expanded in the building.
I would certainly be happy to accept those conditions.
Okay. We talked about earlier, and I would reiterate, I think, our recommendation for it, that the village attorney would have to approve covenants, conditions and restrictions between Primrose and the owner prior to building permits.
Which is what I brought up. I would certainly accept that condition.
Another one which that I would recommend is on the building, the residential building, that in the event that they ever desire to convert it to an HOA, into condos and sell it, office condos, that we, that the village attorney would have to approve the HOA declaration and bylaws.
Yep, reasonable. I would certainly accept that condition.
It may never, it may never happen, but we want to make sure that we, you know, that if they're going to propose HOA bylaws, that it would meet our needs.
Yep.
In the future. So.
And then do we have to add the condition about the crosswalk? Or is that in the report?
Crosswalk is in the report.
It's in the report.
So.
With flashing lights and signals.
Well, so that's, so that's in the design plans that have been presented. So that would be.
Part of, okay.
All approvals would be subject to building and compliance with the plans, which would include those public improvements. One, if you would like to make this a condition, that is up to you, but it was talked about with the charging stations. The applicant indicated that they would have penalties for those who park at the charging stations beyond just the time that they're charging. You could add a condition that says that they must impose penalties for those who park at the charging stations after, um, the car is charged. And if you don't want to, that's your call.
Well, it's kind of picky you and I would put in there that the, um, the petitioner would consider adding additional.
Okay.
Charging stations.
I agree.
That's it.
And then one other one that we just, there was a comment made earlier about construction traffic. One thing that we may want to do is that prior to getting any building permits, that the village would approve a, a construction traffic.
Don't we always do that?
We typically do when it's a condition of development agreement. It's fairly standard.
But we do put that in?
Sometimes, yeah, if that's important to, to this board, we can.
Sure. I'd add it.
Are there any other conditions that anyone wants to throw by Mary so she can add it into her motion?
I'm going to second Mary's motion.
Thank you.
I would like to see a condition though, that the petitioner look into enhancing safety if pedestrian crossing signs are appropriate for the village, for the petitioner. I think that should be looked into.
Some additional signage?
But that's on us.
That's on us. We can do that.
Yeah.
They don't need to do it.
But I think the, I think staff asked the petitioner to provide those safety issues with the beacons and the island.
No, that, that is part of my, that's part of my proposal. If that doesn't work, it is a public street.
Right.
We as the village are entitled to enhance the safety with whatever conditions we want to impose. And I would rather that the experts, the police department, the traffic consultants we use, and the other people at this table make the decision about what's imposed at that time, rather than making the petitioner do it. So no, I would not add that to my motion. With all due respect, Larry. Okay, and I believe Jennifer seconded it.
Any further discussion? Is, I'm just wondering if there's a way to split that baby? So. Sorry. But I, to the extent that, that additional safety, pedestrian safety enhancements are identified, the petitioner will agree by a professional engineer, the petitioner will agree to support them.
As opposed to objecting because?
Whatever. And I, and that doesn't mean paying for whatever, but I think.
I like the word support.
I, I just, I think there's a way to do that, that Larry answers your question, that it identifies that there could be a future problem, right? This might not be adequate.
Right.
And, and I appreciate, it's got to be supported by professional traffic engineers, got to be forced, but I think there may be a way to do that. Ben, did you?
got to be portion, but I think there may be a way to do that. Ben, did you get, you got to get a sense of that a little bit?
That they will cooperate with us?
I like the word support. I don't like.
Yep. I, I don't want, I don't want, we don't want to give them discretion to say yes or no, because we want to be able to do it. That's your point.
Right.
On the other hand, I don't want them to object, then we get, we get in a little bit of.
Well, I think we all agree that safety is what everybody wants.
Right.
That's what I hear.
Of course.
So um, yeah, if you want to put that, in the event that the village decides that further safety measures are.
Petitioner will not object.
The petitioner will support such efforts.
Not object to the, to them.
Okay.
And hopefully that's not weird language to you guys. I mean, we're not.
It's all weird language.
It's weird to Mary.
He looks.
So what, so what was it? My, my understanding is that we're talking about political support and they will not raise objections to additional safety signage or other.
Yes.
Safety measures on the street.
No, I don't want to imply that we are not the people who, who.
We'll decide that, because we will.
Implement them.
So this is, okay, so the crosswalk goes in.
Yes.
Village says, we need more signs.
Yes.
You just don't want us to object, is that it?
Yeah.
It's on our street.
Not asking you, not asking you to pay, not asking you to.
I'm sorry, what was the beginning?
Not asking the applicant to pay for the additional signage.
That's what I'm trying to make sure.
Not asking the applicant to dedicate additional room for right of way, but they won't, but that the applicant won't object.
Will not oppose our attempt if we decide to do something additional in.
On the public right of way. Yeah, that's, okay. Just wanted to make.
Yep.
Clarify that.
Yep.
All right. We'll add that as a condition.
Yep.
And with that.
This is the longest motion I have ever made.
And just to reiterate, your second covers it.
I second.
Okay, any other discussion?
No.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Congratulations, guys. We will draft, uh, we will draft an ordinance for consideration in our next meeting on the preliminary, on the recommendation.
Is this an ordinance or goes back to plan commission on?
It'll go back to plan commission.
Oh, okay. It goes, it goes back to, sorry. Let's be clear.
The PUD.
Let's be clear. This will go back to plan commission for final PUD, for final PUD approval or recommendation. Then it will come to us for.
Bow.
A vote on that.
Andrew, timing, what do you think is timing?
Uh, it's up to the developer when they're ready.
So they have to prepare a lot of documents and therefore it's up to kind of their schedule? Okay.
So you have the motion, Andrew Scott, you have the motion unanimous? You have the,
Yes.
The passage of the motion unanimous? There, there's not a formal ordinance, but now you go to final.
Sure.
It's our next step.
Yep.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thanks, guys. Thanks very much.
Get your name in front of you.
That's true.
Thanks, team.
Next matter on our agenda is the resolution authorizing, is on our consent agenda, item 2566. Resolution authorizing release of minutes, of certain closed minutes, the village board. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as well? So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby. Trustee Jaco- Jacoby? Oh, yes. Sorry. Trustee Oppenheim?
Yes.
Trustee Benton?
Yes.
Trustee Berg?
Yes. No, old business, new business. Item 2565, a resolution approving agreement with Elevator Inspection Services, Inc. for Elevator Inspection Services.
Is this our present contractor?
What is?
Ah, oh, okay.
Listen.
Hi, good morning, or good afternoon or good evening. Uh, so as you know, the state of Illinois mandates a safety inspection on all commercial elevators on a yearly basis. The village Deerfield has currently 219 elevators.
Wow.
Um, in 2024, a little history here, uh, we joined up with Lake County in a joint bid process um, and chose this current elevator provider. Again, in 2018, staff obtained competitive bid, bid pricing and signed again with Elevator Inspection Services. Currently, the agreement is up and we are looking to recommend continuing our professional services um, with Elevator Inspection Services are known as EIS. We did go out to, uh, we did not go out to bid, but we did get some numbers from other competitors and we still feel that we're comfortable with our business relationship with EIS.
And they are so much cheaper.
Questions for Steve. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Tyler's up next on item 2567 and 867, a resolution approving a revised native planting license agreement with the RTA. Metro.
Yes, good evening, Board. So last February in 2024, the village approved a licensee agreement with Metro. Uh, this was keeping with our endeavor for the native plantings. We identified a couple of locations on both sides of the Metro line, um, north of Hazel that could benefit from our native restoration efforts. Um, this agreement was originally inked in February of 2024. However, when it came to actually implement the various requirements, insurance primarily, we found, found out that it was financially um, not a non-starter. So their contract was around $50,000, insurance for that was $35,000. So that's just getting out of the gate. So over the last 18 months, we've worked not only with the insurance requirement, but also the flagging requirements that go along with working within the Metro right of way. Um, it went from about $45,000 between the two to uh, $2,500, 15 of which is just inking this agreement. So we're very thankful for Metro to be cooperating with us. Um, it's not, not uncommon for those requirements to be made, but when you're dealing with heavy equipment, that's one thing. We are, um, this work is, entails backpack sprayers and just personnel walking up and down the, the railroad tracks. So um, after a couple of different meetings onsite, uh, we came to this agreement with Metro. Um, primarily, the, the main difference in these agreements is under section 13, um, where it does cover the Metro's protective insurance policy and that we would be added um, under their umbrella's policy. So uh, with that in mind, staff recommends that the mayor and board of trustees, trustees adopt the resolution approving a landscape license agreement with the RTA to allow the village to complete the agreed upon work.
So this is north of Deerfield Road. How far north?
So this is north of Hazel. So this agreement, luckily, we have two, two locations that we're looking at. One is on the west side, kind of um, in between Chestnut and the railroad tracks. That would be north of Hazel. Um, and then the other side, which is the next gen item, is on Waukegan roadside. That is north of Tony's to our.
Yeah.
Yeah, and to our entrance feature um, across from the high school. So there's a nice little width of land. Um, both our property, well, IDOT's property, but under our maintenance agreement with IDOT and now this agreement with Metro that we can really improve. Um, so there are some good quality plantings in there now, uh, but there's a lot of obviously weeds and undesirable plants. So there'll be quite a work, quite a bit of work in there.
Questions for Tyler. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Motion passes.
2568, a resolution to award contract for native vegetation maintenance and restoration along Waukegan. So.
Yes, so this is a, this is a contract work. So we've worked with Footstone for probably eight years now, um, started in 2017 on Briar Hill Road, actually. And uh, they do tremendous workforce. Um, they know our, they maintain our existing uh, areas that we have already. We've got about eight different locations. Um, we are looking to utilize them, obviously continuing our relationship um, and, and incorporating their, with their contract now, the Metro right of way. So the intent is to tackle this, this side along Waukegan Road this year. Um, originally last year, we were looking at the Chestnut side, but that was because of the IDOT resurfacing project and now with Hazel on, on the other side, where we are paving a little bit. Um, so the, the cost for, to do this work is 65,750. Um, and then in subsequent years, it is a significant drop. It's, you know, sub of, uh, south of $20,000 annually. And then it even goes down further than that. So the bulk of the work is in the year one, um, hence the cost for 65,000 and change. So, um, but because of our relationship that we have with Footstone over the many years we've worked with them and our, and our comfortability with them and their knowledge of just this type of work, uh, we are requesting a waiver of bidding um, as part of this resolution. Uh, so staff, with that being said, staff requests that the board adopt the resolution to award the contract for native vegetation maintenance and restoration along, along Waukegan Road to Footstone, Inc. in the amount not to exceed 65,750.
Question.
When uh, is he starting, talking about starting the work?
As soon as he can.
Really?
Yeah.
Okay.
It's getting to that point where he, he's able to do a lot of the herbicides. I'm sure you're well aware of where it's dry. He can do a lot of that work before, you know, I think in September, you have, you worried about seeds and then things like that dropping. So he's, I think the push is going to be getting Metro to sign this.
Right, but if he can get geared up and do both of these this season, it'll be great.
Oh, Chestnut as well?
Yeah, well.
This, this is only for Waukegan Road.
No, I understand that, but we got both to do.
We do. Yeah, well, you'll, you'll be seeing us soon on the Chestnut side.
Okay.
Does Metro or RTA have a responsibility here? Is, is there a right of way?
Yeah, so on, on this side, it's, it's either IDOT's and under an IDOT agreement that we have to snow plow, to fill potholes, to sweep the roads. We have landscaping maintenance. So we are mowing part of this as well already. Um, so that it's a combination of our maintenance on IDOT right of way, and then Metro does have some maintenance on theirs, but not part of this agreement. We'll be, we'll be tackling their right of way with this as well.
But the, but their standard of care is like not a.
Yes.
And do they have skin in the game on this?
So, so, so they're not going to maintain it?
They never have.
So, so for us, it's about the village appearance issue? They, they just, they'll just, they'll just let it go natural?
That's unfortunate.
And that, and that's a challenge, but you know, thistles and stuff like that.
I get it. It's an ISO and.
Yeah, so this is about us choosing to do this.
Yeah, and we've got.
They just won't.
We've got Deerfield Road on both ends of town. We've got uh, native restoration already occurring there. So this would be a nice addition to the north end.
And we're protecting the work we've already done. You know, these weed seeds that are allowed to be there, bring down the quality of everything we've done everywhere else.
I get it. Thanks.
We're just happy they're allowing it and they, we have this agreement with them at this point compared to where we started.
And, and thanks should go to you guys negotiating with them for as long as you've had to. This has been a long, long discussion.
And it's new for Metro. They don't, they don't do this. This is, this is, which is, it's okay.
And we're thankful they met with us and had the time and the, uh, they could see the vision and, and understand where we're coming from.
Yep.
You need a motion to second.
Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Oppenheim.
Yes.
Trustee Benton.
Yes.
Trustee Berg.
Yes.
Trustee Goldstone.
Yes.
Trustee Greenberg.
Yes.
Trustee Jacoby.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tyler. Items for discussion by the mayor and board of trustees. First, I want to thank the board for clearly telling me how you feel about my ignorance. Popper Loft Design and Aesthetics, I want to thank you for your subtlety on that. That was great. Um, other items for discussion. Um, Deerfield Road Bridge weight load limits. We got a letter the other day from Lake County that um, because of the, the bridge, which is the bridge at Carlisle going into Highland Park.
A little scary.
And the weight limits will be imposed. Um, the bridge is not falling down. There's no immediate threat to the bridge. There is, that is not the case. It is, I look at it as just being cautious while the bridge becomes at a level that's better. Um, and, I don't know, um, more stable for large loads. But uh, I did respond to Lake County with that because there are emergency vehicles that need to use that, you know, to and from a hospital, for example.
Right.
So we are urging Lake County to take that into consideration and to move their project quicker than the three years that's expected. So that's, that's going on. We will continue to talk to Lake County.
So truck traffic that goes, do we have to regulate that? The police have to prevent trucks from going in?
Certain limit could be, could be something that we would want to enforce.
Wow.
But the reality is, there's not a lot of trucks over that weight limit that go over that bridge in the first place.
Okay.
So it's, it, it, it's there, but as a practical matter.
Yeah.
There's not a lot of enforcement. I'm more concerned about fire in.
Fire trucks.
Fire trucks and emergency vehicles. Emergency vehicles than I am about truck traffic.
And we've been joined in this effort by the city of Highland Park. They're endorsing the similar type of reaction that we are. So we've, we've got good support from our neighbors.
Food Truck Wednesday. We finally got a food truck Wednesday night in, finally, although it was a little rainy, uh, maybe not our best uh, night in terms of attendance, but we got it in. There were 10 of our 11 vendors. I think we have 11 or so. So 10 of 11 of the trucks were there. Music was there and those who were there enjoyed it. It was still a little lippy on the weather. Can we have a hall, just as a reminder?